Councilors, you ready? I will call the regular schedule council meeting for September the 9th to order. We've got a motion to adopt the agenda. So we'll have council meetings. Questions, questions? Speaking of questions, all in favor? Adopted the minutes at the regular council meeting of August the 26th. Councilor Scarsella, the council vendor. Questions, deletions? All in favor? Announcements from mayor? A couple things. First, I'd like to pass on council's appreciation and recognition to one of our firefighters who was provided with the service excellence and merit of service awards by the provincial government after 30 years of service. Our congratulations and respect to Dan Hutchison for doing that, for noticing it's been in the papers and others. It's great to have our firefighter recognized, provincial. Other than that, we have UBCM at the end of the month. We have full schedule of meetings with ministers and others. So that will be a busy time, busy full week for all of council. And you'll note that that comes up later in the agenda, where we'll have the council meeting to do that. The third item I've got addresses a number of concerns within the community with regard to an ongoing labor issue between the province and the school teachers. Frankly, that is not a fight for the city. And it's one, although we have very great concerns for the education of children, and we would love to see everybody back in school, it's not a position that this council can take. While individual councilors are free and have expressed their opinions, to have that debate at this table would be very difficult and sensitive, and it's not our fight or position at any time anyway. I do suggest that councils are free to express their own personal opinions as a matter of fact, but it's not an issue that is on this table. I would encourage both sides to work as diligently and as honestly as they could towards resolutions as quickly as possible, because we're all concerned with the education involving the children more in the world. Have we said that? Delegations. Ryan Little from DC Transit. Ryan, forward.
Hey, it's Brad Newey. I'm just here to speak about the performance of your system, which I believe you guys have already reviewed as well, or your prior. This first slide is just an overview of how many milestones in our calendar year. So when you see August, which is the transit improvement program, that is just basically when you have opportunity to request for additional service. We did it a few years ago. So kind of next is the three-year budgeting process, which we should have to you guys in the coming months. Just an overview of your system, which I'm sure you're familiar with now. Your four vehicles here, and your fares are at $2. And I guess the one you might need to look at here, so the rides per hour, shows you average split through rides per hour, and the average of sort of comparable systems is double that. And speaking of labor, basically, it's your system's unique here with the services you have. Many of those communities don't have hand yard service, which lowers your rides per hour. This is just a break in the funding. So the red is your local funding, pay about 31% of the overall transit system out there, revenues taken into account. It's just a basic change of hours over last year. There's an increase due to holiday changes, and also just there's a couple extra months of the expansion hours that were carried over. So revenue is up, and that is just because the fare two does implemented in January of 2013. So ridership went down year over year, fiscal year. The regular conventional service, that's the bus that runs around the schedule, that one, where you guys invested the extra money into, didn't really see too much of an increase there, not as much as we were hoping for in that year. We also had pretty large decrease in hand yard service, and health connections, that's that service that goes down to Kelowna, and also had a drop in ridership. We won't talk about those numbers a little bit later, just to be a bit more background, but Alan worked with the operator local stakeholders here and restructured the hand yard schedule, and ridership is doing very well since that change in the outcome for both sides. So your costs are obviously up. The extra service added to the community is a large portion of where that cost comes from. However, there's also a vehicle that's funded through UBCM, through the PETA program, and that free vehicle expires or replaced. So you also a large increase due to an extra vehicle being charged there. Operating costs also went up, just because of the services. And so the operating cost per hour is about the same as year prior, which is good. So we didn't really see any really inflationary costs year over year. Costs just went up due to service going down. So cost recovery is how much revenue you get back. And the system overall dropped to about 10 and a half percent. And since the system's funded about 50/50, the cost recovery on your local dollars more like 20 percent, if that goes to the tenants here. So here's some good news though. So this year, this is only four months, April to July, and we're seeing, you know, exactly what we'd like to see, costs are lower than budget, and ridership's doing extremely well for the four months, which is, compared to last year, it's great to see. So the main one, conventional ridership, that one is, compared to last year, it's up almost 1,000 rides in just four months. And I just researched when we, when we proposed the expansion, we were estimating about 750-ish more rides per year. And so so far, again, last year, we only saw about 350 increase, so we didn't eat our sort of budgeted amount of rides, but so far this year, we're doing very well on the ridership side of that. And hand yard, due to the changes that were made, that's also a lot from last year as well. Here, just the four months of, so it's April, May, June, July of this year compared to the same months last year. And health connection, and that's, that service is down a bit this year. That one's not really too much a concern for you guys, I would think. This is, that's funded 100% through IHA, as well as the revenue provided goes to them. And the last bullet is, just due to sort of delays and processes for revenue, we don't have very much data on this year, only for two months. At that point, it's, it's down 2% over the two months prior, so I would, I would assume that's going to go up as well to line up with the ridership once we get all the revenue allocated properly. There's just a note down there, just a reminder that the expansion happened in December 2012, and then the hand yard schedule change happened in March of this year. And that is basically it. So you'll continue to work with Alan on looking at the service and how to improve it further. And that is it. So if you want to go back to the slide we want, if you guys have any questions now, I can go back to the slides and ask any questions over.
Counselors?
Yes, we talked about this recently, and Mr. Mason was late.
Yes.
And we had met with the stakeholders, and Alan was going to ask them to gather some stats about when the ridership was through the hours.
Yep.
So that we can measure, you know, say we got 10 hours in there in the week, if we had to make some cuts, that they would be logical.
Yes, we do have that information. I'm not sure what we're going to do with it yet, but we have it ready to go to look at using it. So I'll leave with Alan after this too, and decide and present you guys information on it as well. But you know, there's no runs with zero on it, but there are lower runs with four or five people on it. So there are ones that are lower before, but you can always look at.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Barry?
How are we doing compared to the rest of the province on average?
I have the written ones, I thought they would come up here. So I have some information on just, one of yours, just for last year. So I guess you guys appear to be more concerned with the cost per ride look like, or what would you like to?
Well, it's just a household thing. So I mean, money put in compared to the money we get back.
Okay. So for you guys, it looks like this is the, not what you pay locally, but for what the whole system cost. You, yeah, like you mentioned, our article, I think it's about just over 20 bucks per ride. It works out to be that it's, the cost is. And there's definitely many above yours. I would say you're probably in the top quarter of sort of the systems.
Top quarter means top quarter of operating?
Of cost per, per ride. But for, but your cost per hour in your operators is reasonable, and your maintenance of the areas gets, so your cost per hour is actually good comparatively to the province. The reason why your cost per ride is higher, higher is just you're not paying a huge amount of ridership compared to some other communities. However, though, in this comparison, I would say probably, at least 50% of people are comparing to, you're not offering hand yard service, but it's just a bus running around, like Mayor, it's one of our best performing systems, and the bus just runs around, doesn't do any hand yard, which hand yard is more expensive, and it's, you're not paying very many rides per hour on that service. So that, so this comparison, it's, it's, overall, it's already compared to, but there are some communities you can compare to more directly. We can look at that too a bit, but I would say your, you know, the rides per hour should could, could be better than it is. And, and we're seeing that now. Over last year, yeah, it's, it wasn't the best year, but you know.
Thank you. Counselors? Do you have questions? Thank you, Ryan. Appreciate it. Yeah, that takes us to business and rising from the mess. Page one. Page two. Three. Four. All right. Mr. Palmer, do you have something to say on the waterworks?
If I can provide a quick update here. Your worship, with the letter that we've received from the beginning Water Works since the last meeting, and with council's direction on the last meeting, we are starting discussions with Interior Health and the beginning Water District Board to look for options moving forward. So the next steps will be to seek funding opportunities. Already staff has identified that we'll be including funds in the 2015 preliminary budget to provide some city funds towards studies that may be required as part of these options. So the studies would review the system, the water system, identify upgrades required for compliance with Interior Health, fire protection, and the city bylaws, and would likely propose options for governance, funding, timelines, and processes for moving forward. Additionally, the city has prepared the attached information sheet for residents to understand the issues.
Thank you. Counselor? Counselor Scarsella?
Yes, your worship. I have a letter from Interior Health on this matter from 2015. Why this letter hasn't been come to council? It's a big concern about water source and energy. That's a big concern, because that's had business stopped permanent for getting, why this letter come to council?
I guess the first question would be, can you share up with council now, so we know what you're talking about?
It's a, the beginning, beginning is some location before, we get, we concern about capacity to resort to big day demand and maximum production. The infrastructure's going to two production wells in 23 years, so all the, all the background and that, and they stop, they say that they can't, they have to stop business license and all that stuff, permits and all that. Why doesn't it come to council? Because why wasn't doing that? Who's the letter?
So, Interior Health, who's in the question?
It's December 20th, 2013, addressed to Engineering Development Services and Rob Fleming, Interior Health. Are you familiar with Mr. Palmer? Your worship, we receive a lot of letters. This is almost a year ago, and so we can certainly do some research on where this was processed. I can certainly talk about practices of receiving letters. We have a very thorough system for those items that are brought to the attention of council, but I would suggest that just be referred to staff, and you can answer those questions.
My point is, your worship, the seven people, council and Mayor and City, City City business, and it should be up to date to big issue like that, a very big issue like that. And I was in the dark till I see this letter. And I'd be delighted when the people in this town to know what's happening down.
So I guess the answer, Counselor Scarsella, is that, obviously, I haven't seen this letter either. And so what we would do is refer to staff to say, look, where is this letter? What happened to it? Where did it go? So we'll ask that question of staff. Does that satisfy your concern, or do you have something else you wish to say?
Well, I have something else to say. We have a few people from the beginning here, and they're going to address the council today, and eventually down. So they're here today in Trudan, but sadly, I'm not sure if it's, what, what's happened, I don't have it back down. And they're here today to, they're very concerned what's happened in the beginning, and they want to address the council, which is reasonable to say that they should address the council because they're in Trudan. So, your worship, I think if you're willing to address the council today, perhaps, I'm sure you'll help council.
Hey, Counselor Scarsella, we called for the agenda. You voted on the agenda to approve it as it sits. It does not have that presentation in that agenda. The agendas have been lined up by staff, so that they're followed progressive orders. And in fact, a number of actions have been taken to address these concerns more appropriately. I'm aware that they've met, myself and Mr. Palmer. So are you suggesting now a change in the agenda?
No, your worship, they've been in Trudan to address the council today. So I'd like to know why they've been in Trudan. In my presentation, this letter to staff that they want to address the council, they have been in Trudan. I'm not sure why. The, the letter say that, yeah, they're very concerned the beginning, there's a letter from Interior Health that I showed you today. When was council aware of this matter, which I addressed that? This again causes great concern property owners in the beginning, and will affect property value also. And I feel that not just that, affect Rebelstoke too, because the beginning is part of Rebelstoke.
The, the big Eddie is part of Rebelstoke.
Excuse me, sir? Sir?
The big Eddie is part of Rebelstoke.
No, I chair the meeting.
Okay, go ahead.
Your worship?
Why, why do we call you, your worship? Why? Go on, tell me. Throw me out, throw me out, please. Get someone to throw me out.
Thank you, bye.
No, I pay my property taxes, so I'd like to.
Sir, it's not an open public forum.
Oh, it's not? So I, so I didn't understand it.
No, it's not. I chair the meeting.
Right, you're the boss, right?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Bye.
Stay quiet, please.
Carry on with. On yourself, this is Counselor Scarsella, he's good.
Sir, sir, this is the second one.
Second one, how many warrants did I get?
Two.
Two, find my second one. Throw me out. I've been thrown out of better places than this. Oh, that's my jacket, by the way. Right, thanks, David. Front page news. Hooray. Go on, Scott. Go on, you beauty, brilliant. I do pay my property taxes. Can anyone lend me $100 or?
Sir, please, sir.
Sir, sir, please. Okay, I'm fine, okay. I'll pick him up outside. I have this letter on this. Outside, please. Oh, oh, don't put me in the papers, please. Don't come in for that now.
Sir?
This way.
Hi.
Jacket.
This way.
Look, I've been to glassy.
Take five. Okay. Big breath, everybody? Continue on. Counselor Scarsella, do you have more to say? I'd like to turn over, Mr. Palmer does have a few comments.
Yeah, I'd just like to know why they, because they want to make this day to council and Trudan.
Okay, so that's a staff function, and I'll turn that over to Mr. Palmer.
Okay. Your worship and council, so first of all, the letter, which we were not aware that that was going to be coming to this agenda, and so actually at this point, it's on the agenda unless council chooses to receive it on this agenda. Will advise that that was discussed in a in camera meeting previously. On the second item, on the delegations before council, there is a bylaw that exists, it's a procedure bylaw that gives the parameters for having delegations. So the request to come on to this meeting, first of all, was after the timeline for the delegation for it to be put on the council agenda. Now, I mean noted that we do consider late items, as council does, and will bring those before council when appropriate. The issues were not clear, in my opinion, as a corporate officer, regarding the request. There was confusion regarding the development application, there's elements of, appeared to be elements of politics. And there was a couple items that the, the person, George Beeler, who's here right now, requested for coming before council. And there was two items that were not clear, and I did ask for further written confirmation of what those issues were. And one was dealing with the bylaw, the request for a change of bylaw. The other was a request for having an area be removed from the city waters. And so we're waiting for that information. The applicant has been advised that those are clear, then we certainly come before a delegation, ask for the procedure by law.
Clear, Mr. Counselor Scarsella?
So what you say, they were late, the deadline was on Tuesday evening, they were late, right? Is that correct?
Your worship, I made two points. One was that it was late, however, I did have to give a deadline, meet with the applicant to consider whether we come on as a late item. There wasn't any urgency. And there was areas for that the applicant to consider, to provide better clarity.
Okay, counselors? Counselor Sean?
Thank you, worship. First of all, I think that, you know, having a good water system is a pretty basic requirement for any, any center, the big Eddie being no different than any place else. And obviously, this is a very contentious issue, it kind of stormed in on us here, and it's taken us a bit by surprise, I would say, as council. The big Eddie, traditionally, their water service, they've been fiercely independent, and I can remember at least two times in the past when they've turned down assistance from the city to correct issues over there. One was, and I'm just guessing at the years, but one was probably in the early 90s when there was a beaver fever scare, and the city offered to help them with a coronation that was going to be forced on us by the province, and they wanted to do their own thing, and they did. And it's operated, for the most part, independently of the city all these years. And now, this situation's rid its ugly head, and I think staff is doing a reasonably good job of moving forward and trying to repair it and bring it up to standard and help them with this issue, so that we don't have business owners and people concerned about their water. The letter that Counselor Scarsella refers to, that, that's a bit of a concern for me as well, but I don't know how good a process that is to beat ourselves up on that. The letter came, and it's over a year ago, and we didn't see it, that's a concern about it. But at the same time, I don't think there's any, any good in trying to point fingers at why that didn't come to us. The problem at hand and task at hand now is to move forward and correct this. And I think, once again, staff, I look at what they've sent out to the public, and we're moving forward. I know that the staff has maybe not a full working knowledge of what's going over there, or what's going on in the big Eddie as far as infrastructure, so it's going to take some time, possibly to get them up to speed, and work towards fixing it. And that is the best we can do right now, and I think we're doing everything we can to make that process happen.
Counselor Bennett, Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, worship. As Counselor Sean you said, my recollection is that in the past, the big Eddie water system hasn't wanted to be part of Rebelstoke, and not has ever reason to be. And we've already started, they've already started the process, we've followed up on it, and we're ahead working on it. That said, I would also like to make a suggestion that we have any other letters that we don't know of, that are going to be grandstanding to the council, that they get on the agenda so we could refer to them, so at least we can deal with them and know what the topic is about.
Counselor Johnson? I don't have anything to add, your worship. Counselors? Counselor Nixon?
I'm just going to say that staff continue to work with the big Eddie Water Works towards solutions for both the residents and businesses and big Eddie neighborhood, and staff are even.
So as we try to move forward in the same objective and understanding of water security and volumes are key to the maintenance of services that we love to provide for the city, I'm hoping that we can have some cooperation moving forward with this. The fact that the letter has been put forward, comes out of an in-camera section, is a little bit troubling. And having said that, I'm sure staff will have to take that into advisement and see forward. With that, let's move on then to correspondence. Full business, signed by law.
Yes, your worship, I'll bring forward the motion, that's signed by law, number 2054, the end of by law to regulate signs, receiving first and second reading, and then a public hearing be scheduled for 2:30 PM October 14th, 2014, in council chambers.
Senator? Mr. R. Strider? Discussion, Counselor Nixon?
And the new signed by law went to the advisory planning commission for their ECA, and they were quite happy with it. And it will go to the commencement for their ECA.
Counselors? Counselor Strider, Counselor Scarsella?
And worship, would that go to the chamber of office, also?
We can.
Please.
That's a recommendation. Mr. Strider?
Your worship, the report was forwarded to the chamber of office following the meeting in August, and council gave this initial announcement, it was forwarded to the chamber of office.
Thank you. Counselors, any further? Question then, all in favor? Full business, I made Cape applications.
I want to do that, your worship, Cape applications, the applications of the application from Icon Rebelstoke Sports Group Limited for a public special event. You approved for various game days from September 2nd, 2014, until April 30th, 2015, 10 hours at 4:00 PM and 9:30 PM, which is the Rebelstoke game times at the Rebelstoke Forum. At the Revelstoke Forum here at 510th Street, subject to the stated conditions. And the conditions are pretty standard now. Through many of our liability insurance for the city of Revelstoke, named as an additional insurer. And two, security plans approved by the RCMP. And three, designated driver program in place. And four, proof of certification by the event organizer. And five, all of the forms and approval as required by the committee commission of DC must be in place.
Second. Discussion? Question then, all in favor? Development permit application, 301, Third Street West.
Yes, your worship. I'll bring forward that the development permit application submitted for remediation of the exterior northeast entrance area. Can of the post on the property lot 1 to 6 in parcel A, C268671, on lot 7, lot 10, plan 636301, Third Street West, be approved, subject to the following conditions. The applicant is to provide an encroachment agreement for the structures encroaching into the city right of way. The project construction plans are to be included with the development permit as Schedule A. And that the corporate officer be authorized to issue the development permit once the above noted conditions have been satisfied.
Second. Mr. Solling, please.
Thank you, your worship. The subject property of the development permit is located at 301, Third Street West. The applicant is requesting to renovate exterior canopy post and postal box entrance area to deal with existing damage and ongoing issues. The proposed renovations include the construction of new concrete slab, ram, end rails and stairs. Existing exterior canopy structure will not be modified. From a staff perspective, the impact to the form and character of the existing building by the proposed renovations are considered negligible. And the renovations will fix the concrete slab issues and ensure the entrance remains safe. The proposal conplies with the applicable development permit area D policies. Staff has requested an encroachment agreement as a condition of approval to manage the city's liability related to the encroachments of the existing entrance canopy structures into the city of Revelstoke right of way. Staff recommendation is for approval with the conditions as previously read by Counselor Nixon.
Counselors?
Just a quick question, Chris. Is it possible to still have wheelchair access while the construction's going on?
It's a good question, and I'm sure they'll be dealing with it in some way. But I'm not, they haven't said anything, that's a good question.
Sure. Approved? All in question, all in favor? Pass. Development 2014, Act 11, for 3030, 1000 years.
Yes, your worship. I'll bring forward that the development permit application submitted by representatives of the owners of Revelstoke Mountain Resort to convert a residential single-family dwelling, that's the blue house, into a commercial building for the state patrol operations on property lot 2, plan 5682, 3030, mows the road, be approved, subject to the following conditions. The owner is to provide an engineered design for the proposed new vehicle parking area. And the revised site plan, elevations and floor plans are to be included with the development permit as Schedule A. And that the corporate officer be authorized to issue the development permit once the above noted conditions have been satisfied.
Second. Mr. Stracher, please.
Thank you, your worship. As noted, it's a development permit application to convert an existing single-family dwelling up in RMR from its residential use to commercial use. Commercial use is going to be for state patrol operations as well as the staff's east door area. There's minor renovations being conducted inside the buildings, some new walls, as well as removal of a number of fixtures, plumbing fixtures from the building. Exterior renovations are going to include some roofing materials, as well as some upgrades to window frames and so forth. The proposal includes a new parking area to be located at the far end of the building, which is going to require some design work and engineering work, which is part of the recommendation. So we're looking for just an engineered design for that portion of new parking to ensure that it's going to meet standards. Thank you, your worship.
Counselors?
Just, your worship, state patrol hasn't had a home up there. So this is going to be a good proposal for the state patrol to take their victims to be loaded to an ambulance. Not in front of a whole child, because from the state patrol.
Let me see if I can phrase that. What the resort are doing is providing a better accommodation for the state patrol and easier access for their clients.
Yes.
Thank you.
Ready to question then? All in the favor? Close, passing. Development variance, variance permit 2014 to 3015, for new road.
Yes, your worship. I'll bring forward that the revised development variance permit application submitted for the property lot 5, plan 14807, 1540 hay road, to vary zoning by law number 1264, section 7144, to reduce the minimum rear yard setback from 7.6 meters to 4.48 meters for an existing single-family dwelling. To reduce the minimum rear yard setback for a cover gap from 7.6 meters to 0.8 meters. And to vary section 5.12, to reduce the minimum projection setback from 1.6 meters to 0.5 meters, be approved, subject to the following condition. The site plan and elevations are to be included with the development variance permit as Schedule A. And that the corporate officer be authorized to issue the development variance permit once the above noted conditions have been satisfied.
Second. Mr. Stracher, please.
Thank you, your worship. This is a variance that was approved by counsel in June of this year. When the detailed engineered drawings were being prepared for the construction. The drawings came in with a little bit more detail as far as how that eve was going to project. And at that point, it was identified that there should have been another piece to this variance when it originally came to counsel, recognizing that the roof line would actually project into the setback area. So the piece that's in question is this small portion of the eve, which projects beyond the edge of the deck that causes us to come back to counsel. The original DVP, the neighbor's draw set letter says as well, we didn't receive any input on this particular application. So when it's come back as an revision to counsel, it's just come back for this component without re-notifying the neighbors due to its minor nature. The drawings themselves have not significantly changed. Thank you, your worship.
Counselors?
Just a quick question. As far as I understand it, at the back of that house, there's nothing more than an hillside. Is that correct?
Your worship, there's a steep slope that rises beyond this that is a protected area. And so it's just pushing adjacent properties. However, it's a portion of their properties that are, it's not usable due to poverty.
Yeah, it's key, yeah.
So is that slope part of their neighbor's property?
That's correct.
So the neighbor's property would then be within half a meter of their back doorstep?
That's correct. And if you see the slide, it's, I think it's almost 12 meters up to the top of the slope where the homes are located. And it's, we do have a slide, if you could put me back up, I'll show you what that slope looks like. It extends quite a ways from the back of this property up to the top. This deck portion is on the back of the home. However, the houses themselves and the adjacent properties are at the top of the hill. And this slope begins at the back of their yards, extending downwards. And there's a covenant that covers that portion that doesn't allow for any development due to the steep slope. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. Counselors? Seeing none in the question, all in favor? Close? Passing. Counselor meeting canceled. I would move, your worship, that the regular council meeting scheduled for 3:00 PM on Tuesday, September 23rd, 2014, be canceled. That's become a DBCM? Yes, your worship. That's the background. Counselor Rickson, question? Question, Counselor Solling? For the question, all in favor? Pass. A reading of the session. Mr. Solling?
About, your worship, that the recommendation is that the lease for the concession at Revelstoke Arena to Icon Sports Group be approved for a seven-month term with two seven-month renewal terms, subject to notice of proposed property disposition, advertised in the local newspaper for two consecutive lees, and that the mayor and director of corporate administration be authorized to sign on behalf of the city.
Second, Counselor Dunlop. Discussion? Mr. Nader, any doubt?
No, your worship.
Mr. Beck? Question then, all in favor? I have G's. Would you make a motion? I do that, your worship. Mr. Mason, is your worship to address this?
I think it's laid out fairly clearly in the memo. The Revelstoke Cycling Club brought the matter of the proposed logging on my person to my attention just earlier last week to the Economic Development Commission. At that time, there was a lack of information over the timing of the proposed logging and exactly what was involved in the logging. So there was concern from the commission that the logging might be detrimental to the travel system, that the city itself planned over there to the tourism infrastructure monies. The second concern, I guess, was that after the logging, I remember Benny Dench last year, or earlier this year, this, who specifically asked that local government be consulted anytime it was logging close to the community. And it was a bit concerning that we hadn't been consulting. Since the EDC meeting last Wednesday, with the communication with DC Timber Sales, the proposed logging is not planned until 2016. They acknowledged that not consulting local government was an oversight. They fully intend to do that. In fact, they have sent information to us and to the regional district. And they are committed to having a full public process. So I don't think there's as much urgency as the EDC believed there would be on this matter. But I still think it would be good practice for us to send a letter just reminding DCTS and those shift orders that we would like to be consulted. And I think it's important that these facilities over there are used extensively by the public here. And I think it's a good thing for the public to have some input into what's planned over there.
Counselors? All in question, all in favor? Close? Taxes up to by law 2055? I do that, your worship. I would move that by law number 2055, being a by law to exempt land and/or improvements from taxation for the 2015 taxation year. Receive first, second and third readings. Second, question, please. Discussion? Any question, all in favor? Passing. And the grader tender?
Yes, your worship. I'll bring forward that the grader tender be awarded to Finning Canada Incorporated to supply a 2014 CAT 140 M2 grader with 20 machine hours at a cost of $214,700 plus taxes.
Second. Discussion? Mr. Komenoski, I think you wish that?
Yeah, maybe, your worship. I think we were somewhat disappointed we didn't receive any other bids on this purchase. However, you know, CAT did come forward with a newer machine with 20 hours. So it's a good opportunity for us to purchase this machine. A brand-new machine, the 2015, would be in excess of $300,000. So I think the value is very good. And the life cycling costs are in our advantage as well. We're probably looking at around $5.20 an hour for the first 4,000 hours. And beyond the 8,000 to 12,000 hours, you're looking at close to $50 an hour for running time. So the advantage of purchasing this piece of equipment with these low hours is in our favor.
So this is next lease or demo, or?
This is the next demo. It's disposal equipment from 2014. It's just the timing thing for us that we're dealt.
Counselors? Counselor Solling?
Just for my own information, we have a grader, it's 85,500 operation hours. Is that maximum for grader, or just an average?
It gets to be in its upper lifespan, for sure. Like I just aforementioned, graders worth hours of 8,000 and higher, your average running cost per hour is almost $50 per hour. Because when something fails, you're putting expenses into a machine that are almost the value of the equipment. So if you have to put $10,000, $15,000 into that piece of equipment, the value of that piece of equipment is only around $25,000. So you're almost paying in repairs what you would to purchase that year of machine.
Just that, your worship, my concern is that the grader will only use for three, four months in the best of times. That's my concern, that's why I asked the question.
Yes, your worship. We do use our graders for shouldering and also grading any other gravel roads we have, which we only have about 10 kilometers of that type of road. So the application is less in the summer, that is true. But in the winter time, we know the importance of these machines. So keeping three graders running is integral to our program.
Any question, all in favor? Close, all close, passing. Lewis is on the communications. I'm going to go through them. Please jump in and present them to Mr. Ab. First one is minutes of the Committee to Approve Public Events. Administration and Security Minutes. The Gas Tag Program Services note of August 19th, noting we received $171,000 from Gas Tubs. Mr. Ingles, your smile? Thank you.
Last, my worship. What, may I, worship?
Please.
Many hundreds of $1,000, quick answer.
Mr. Ingles?
Your worship, we account for that funding in the budget. And it's available for specific projects, which we budgeted for in financial plan. And there's balance, I don't remember our plan, which we carry forward each year. And it's available for future projects.
Targeted for very specific projects?
That's targeted, yes.
Certain objects, that's it. Thank you. Um, Lumber Basin Trust, our response to the letter they wrote regarding the Thunder River Treaties in Revelstoke. Thunder River Treaty, this is a letter from the Local Government Committee, noting that September 16th would be the 50th anniversary of the Thunder River Treaty. And suggesting we may have an appropriate for your community. Counselors? Letter regarding the community housing society here, from Mayor. This follows our discussions of the last council. Check representation report for July. Monthly business license summary for August.
Your worship, I have, monthly businesses are up to 966 businesses. And none closing, everyone's creeping up to 1,000 businesses in this town. It's grown steadily in the last three years.
One of the suggestions I had is that we issue these thousands of business licenses for free. I'm getting closer all the time. And I'm sorry, Mr. Dune, I just noticed that Stokafen just picked up a...
I have a few today. The first one is with regards to the Big Eddie Water Works. That letter, did I understand you correctly, say correctly, that that letter was originally considered in camera?
Mr. Palmer's advised that that letter was received in camera.
It was received in camera. Was it discussed in camera by council?
It's an in-camera discussion.
Was it an in-camera discussion by council?
I'm taking Mr. Palmer's advice.
Yeah, maybe I'll speak to that. So, worship, first of all, the letter, normally something like this would need to be on the agenda prior to coming to here, and that's why we have that process, so that we don't get one-sided. So we don't have a whole lot of information, but I did have staff quickly did a review to see if that was entertained before. So all we know at this point is that it was considered in camera. And I'll confirm that probably tonight or tomorrow, I'll just confirm that the status of that is advised council in camera on the circumstances around that letter.
Okay. Let's be clear that you're saying the letter was considered in camera?
Well, your worship, we don't know specifically at this point. What we know is that it was on the agenda, for any camera agenda.
When was that, that in-camera agenda? That was not in, I don't recall that as being...
So, your worship, normally we would not be discussing even the agenda items?
Oh, I understand, yeah.
So, in that, I guess just for clarity on the, if I may take a moment, the community charter provides very specific provincial law on what can be considered in camera and what cannot. There's some things that must be considered in camera, and there's other things that may be considered in camera for various reasons, and those are referred to when we go into camera. For example, when we go into camera, we'll be referring to those appropriate sections in the community charter. Normally, we would not be discussing the, even the agenda items, because sometimes there's sensitivity around those. One of the practices that this council has taken on in the last, I think, within the last three years, is to make a practice of considering in camera, they do consider which things can be released, and sometimes there is a release and sometimes there isn't, depending on the sensitivity and the legality of the matters being considered in camera.
Thank you, your worship, on Mr. Palmer. Through your worship, this is, however, now a public issue, and this letter is now a public document. So its provenance, I think, is, is relevant. So at what point was this, was this letter discussed in camera? What I'd like to know, was this in December? After the 20th when it was received, or was it in January 2014?
Your worship, because the matter was considered in camera, and also because we did not know this was going to be put on today's agenda, we are not prepared, first of all, to answer the question, because we have, did not know this was coming, so we haven't done the research. The urgency is very clear to me, and so we, staff will be reviewing the letter, the background of that, and because it was an in-camera item, we'll be reporting it out to council in camera, and council will make appropriate decisions at that time as to what information is discussed and what is appropriate to be released.
Might council then decide to comment publicly on this?
They might, but council must also be very aware of the legal sanctity of the in-camera discussions and the sensitivities of information coming out of in-camera discussions.
Even though the letter is now a public document?
Even though the letter is now a public document, was it made public document by a council member or by somebody who had it in the public? Where did it come from? If it was discussed and received in camera, then there's a legal sensitivity there that we will have to be very careful as we step forward with it.
Okay.
The whole issue is starting to have a bit of a taint, and the council and residents of the Big Eddie share a common objective. But in the meantime, we're going to push back and forth on this, ideally, we'd be able to resolve this as quickly and as expediently as possible.
Okay. Thank you, your worship. I have a supplemental question with regards to this issue, and I'm sure we'll be discussing this further in the future, but with regards to development in the Big Eddie, there have been allegations made that numerous development permits have been stalled as a result of this, and yet I've also been told that only one development project has been held up as a result of these problems with Big Eddie Water Works. Can you clarify that for us?
The challenges with the Big Eddie Water Works have stalled a number of developments in the Big Eddie. There have been residential homes built, but not commercial. If nothing else, the matter is now becoming clear and coming to resolution, but it's been a challenge for the city to provide the servicing and bylaw requirements that are expected of them, when they do not control the services and delivery of water to the Big Eddie.
Thank you, your worship. On a separate issue, this is with regards to proposed logging on Mount McPherson. Who would those logs be sold to? Do we know? Who would be cutting them and who they would go to?
You don't, is the fact, because it's under the D.C. Timber Sales Program, which will put those areas up for competitive bid.
I see.
And that is a program that's managed by the ministry.
Okay. That's it for me, your worship. Thank you very much.
I was also asked about the letter, but David asked my question, so I don't have to.
Great minds.
Yeah.
Think alike.
So while we're on in-camera discussions then, I'll entertain a motion pursuant to 90.1 EG and K of the community charter to move in camera. Second, councillor Smarling, all in favor?